There we go. Thank you, Mason. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the last city council meeting of two thousand twenty-one for December fourteenth on Tuesday. The city council regular meeting is being held telephonically and virtually in compliance with state executive and legislative actions responding to the COVID nineteen emergency. That the meeting is called to order, and Krista, if you could please call the roll.
Yes. Councilmember Porter.
Here.
Councilmember Simomo.
Here, she's screwing us up tonight.
I apologize. Councilmember Soltis?
Here.
Councilmember Cocal. I'm sorry, I didn't hear a vocal.
We can't hear you, Jared.
You're not a vocal Cocal.
Okay, I can see Councilmember Cocal saying that he is present. Councilmember Harjahausen?
I am here.
Mayor Protem Smith?
I'm here as well.
Mayor Wagner?
I am here.
We have a quorum, your honor.
Thank you, Krista. If everybody could please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you hear me now? There we go.
Yeah, thank you, Jared. Okay, thank you, everybody. First up is approval of the agenda. Regan, do we have any changes tonight?
No, sir.
Great, thank you. I'd look for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Joe and seconded in by Christina to approve the agenda as posted. Call for a roll call vote. Jared, how do you vote?
Aye.
Sean, how do you vote?
Aye.
Christina, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jennifer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Joe, how do you vote?
Aye.
Beth, how do you vote?
Aye.
I also vote aye. It is unanimous to approve the agenda as posted. There is no public communication tonight. This is moving into the first of two public comment periods. Speakers will state their name, address, and organization. Comments are directed to the city council, not the audience or staff. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to no more than four minutes per speaker. Looking at our audience, is there anybody in the audience wishing to address council tonight? Please raise your hand. Anybody in the audience wishing to address council? Seeing nobody raise their hand, we will have a second opportunity for a public comment towards the end of our meeting. Next up is approval of the consent agenda, which is item C one through C nine. Look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Beth and seconded by Jennifer to approve the consent agenda consisting of items C one through C nine. Call for a roll call vote. Jared, how do you vote?
Aye.
Sean, how do you vote?
Aye.
Christina, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jennifer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Joe, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Beth, how do you vote?
Aye.
I also vote aye as unanimous to approve the consent agenda. That brings us into new business item number one. Consider an ordinance adopting the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two operating and capital budget. Casey.
Thank you, Mayor, council. Before you tonight, you have the proposed two thousand twenty-two operating and capital budget. We've held several several public hearings and had budget deliberations in meetings as well as the budget workshop. And all of the changes that we've gone over the last few meetings are incorporated into this ordinance as well as the last one that we did for the property tax change, the thirty-seven thousand four hundred and thirty that has been reduced out of the property tax revenue and also reduced out of the town center reserve. So all of those changes have been incorporated. So that's about all I have for you this evening, but I'm open for any questions or any further deliberations that you'd like to have on the budget.
Does council have any questions for Casey tonight? Seeing no one raise their hand, I'd look for, we'll have a proposed ordinance is to pass an ordinance in substantial form as that attached here to adopting two thousand twenty-two operating and capital budget.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Joe and seconded by Christina to pass an ordinance in substantial form as that attached here to adopting the two thousand twenty-two operating and capital budget. Joe would like to speak to your motion.
Yes, I think our budget's very solid this year. I think with some of the issues we had getting to this point, you know, pandemic and all that fun stuff. I think we've done an excellent job of maintaining our expenses and we're going to continue to do an excellent job of maintaining our expenses. And we're going to be preparing ourselves for the future of Covington with this budget, including aspects of the new town center and some new parks. So I'm looking forward to next year.
Thank you. Christina would like to speak to your second.
Sure, very shortly. I'm also very proud of the budget. A lot of hard work went into that and in the preparation and we had a great time sitting down and discussing it. Thank you.
Thanks, Christina. Is there anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? All right, seeing nobody raise their hand, it's been moved and seconded to pass an ordinance in substantial form. Is that attached here to adopting the two thousand twenty-two operating and capital budget? I will call for a roll call vote. Jared, how do you vote?
Aye.
Sean, how do you vote?
Aye.
Christina, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jennifer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Joe, how do you vote?
Aye.
Beth, how do you vote?
Aye.
I also vote aye as unanimous to pass an ordinance in substantial form as that attached here to adopting the two thousand twenty-two operating and capital budget. Next is new business item number two, review the two thousand twenty-one summit action items. Regan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. As you know, we have this summit action item list that we develop after each summit, and this is the list that I'm presenting to you tonight that we developed after our two thousand twenty-one summit, this last January. Hard to believe it's been almost a year since that. So I'll just quickly go through these. If you have any questions, as I do so, please, please ask, and we'll go to that stage. So the first one on there is to refresh our vision, mission, and goals. As you're all aware, we did hold a workshop with members of commissions, council, leadership team. Great workshop, and now we have a subcommittee that has put together some proposals, draft proposals of a new mission, vision, and goals that we'll present to the council in January. So we're excited about that. This next one really falls in line with the vision, mission, and goals. And so once those are approved is when we'll work to update and draft a new strategic plan. And that's also the same with the third item, to revise department functional plans to align with with those. So once those are approved, well, we'll make sure those two items are completed. The next is research to refine the feasibility of the two options of placing our city hall town center site in our town center where it's planned or at the at the Lake Point site, as we've discussed. That was something we were working on and going through, and then in July, when we were reviewing this with council, there was consent from the council to keep it in our town center site. So we kind of dropped it at that point. However, recently, Lake Point has mentioned they'd still like us to build a city hall and potentially a community center at the Lake Point site. However, since they don't own the property next to our town center site now, it'd be some something we'd have to come up different than what they previously mentioned. But at this point, there's no real proposals that have been submitted, other than I think they've signified to Mayor Wagner and myself that they'd still love to have those facilities at the Lake Point site. So the next one is preparing a resolution for council's consideration, adoption, signing recommendation authority to the Human Services Commission for the allocation of fifteen ninety funding. That was something we did and submitted those items to the Human Service Commission, and they they deliberated and gave back some recommendations which were included in the two thousand twenty-two budget. Next one, actually, the next two really are to bring back a proposal for the transportation benefit district sales tax and also for a criminal justice sales tax. We discussed those in a special meeting in July, and council at that point asked us to bring back further information and to have further discussion at our two thousand twenty-two council summit. So we'll be prepared for that. The next one is to increase admissions tax rate to fund the arts program. In October, that was presented to the city council. Council agreed to have that brought back in the form of an ordinance and to increase the rate that we currently have to the maximum rate of five percent. So that will be brought back to council soon. And the next one is looked into an option of adding an administrative position within the police department. Our last chief, police chief, Andy, that was something he was really pushing, and as we were working through this year, and the mayor submitted a decision card as well, and as we're working through with Chief Roberts, we came to the conclusion that the best possible thing for our police part right now would probably be a community care navigator, and that that was more needed than an administrative position in the police department. And as you know, that was submitted as part of the fifteen ninety funds, and so that's where that one ended up. The next, the council asked us for to lobby for state funding to address deferred maintenance in our city streets. As you know, that's something we we continue to pursue, and it's part of our two thousand twenty-two legislative priorities. We have been meeting with with a few legislators and are sharing that message, especially the possibility of councilmatic authority to adopt a transportation sales tax increase to help maintain and preserve our roads. The next one is to involve council in advancing the public education plan. As you know, there's been a lot of different events even during COVID, like mayor's meetups, there's been H O A meetings, National Night Out, Mayor's Day of Concern and others, ribbon cuttings for the chamber, and we've done a good job. Carla's done a great job giving that information out to each council member and and setting up time so that you're see if you're available to provide those opportunities for you to be out into the community. And our second to last one is our social media policy that was presented and adopted by council, and I know several of you have have identified that you'd like to have a social media account established, so that's being worked on. And then the next is to resume our chat with the mayor and the column and also coffee with the mayor, and a couple of those were done as we were able to. And that is the end of our summit action items from two thousand twenty-one. We're happy to be able to have been working on those as staff and together with council. If you have any questions, I'd love to take those.
Council, any questions for Regan? I just want to say that that is a very good list, and I appreciate all the action that's been taken on those summit items. So thank you, Regan, and thank you to all the staff for doing that as well, working on that.
You may ask, staff did a great job getting those done.
All right, seeing no other questions, we'll move on to new business. Item number three is to authorize the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with Gunderson Law Office P L L C for prosecution services. Regan?
Thank you again. So as we've discussed, our our current prosecutor, Kim Hunter, she has decided that she is going to retire. So congratulations to her. And her couple of years representing the city, she's done a good job for us, and we've been really grateful to have her. So we advertised the position and conducted interviews, and Ivory Gunderson, who you just saw come on screen, is an absolutely exceptional candidate. We had a really great time, Megan, and we interviewed Adam and I interviewed Ivory. And we're really excited to have him come on board. So before you tonight is a contract to approve that agreement. And Ivory, I asked Ivory to be here so that he can introduce himself to the council, and if you have any questions, he'd be happy to answer those.
Does council have any questions for Regan or Ivory? Ivory, did you want to say anything before I ask?
Yes, please, and and good evening, city council members, and thank you, Regan, for introducing me. My name is Ivory Gunderson, and that's correct. I do own a law office in Puyallup, it's Gunderson Law Office, and I've been an attorney for six years. I've been at a prosecutor for five years. I've spent most of my time prosecuting several cities around the Puget Sound area. I do have family ties to Enham Claw, and I spent a lot of childhood time in Black Diamond, and I look forward to representing the city of Covington now, moving forward with this prosecution work.
Thank you, Ivory. Does council have any questions? All right, seeing nobody raise their hand. As council was to take action tonight, we have before us to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement.
I just noticed they got they got flip-flopped. So the motion for Ivory's contract approval is under the public defense, not the prosecutor, so they were swatting. Having those both on the agenda, I think they got a little confused there.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Joe and seconded by Jared to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with Gunderson Law Office P L L C for the provision of prosecution services. Joe, would you like to speak to your motion?
I I just want to say welcome aboard, and thank you for, thank you for coming on.
Thank you, Joe. Jared, would you like to speak to your second?
No, thanks.
Is there anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? It's been moved and seconded to authorize city manager to execute an agreement with Gunderson Law Office P L L C for the provision of prosecution services. Call for a roll call vote. Jared, how do you vote?
Aye.
Don, how do you vote?
Aye.
Christina, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jennifer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Joe, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Beth, how do you vote?
Aye.
I vote aye as unanimous. Welcome aboard, Ivory, and thank you for joining us.
Thank you very much.
We look forward to working with you. Next up is to authorize the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with Cordy and Bayorano Incorporated P S for Public Defense Services. Regan?
Thank you. I apologize for the mix-up of those two motions that are in the packet, but so Cordia Bayorano have been our public defenders for quite some time in the city. I believe it was in two thousand fifteen, we amended their contract. And what we've noticed these last couple of years, we have a base monthly rate that they're paid. And what we've noticed in two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one, that the case count that they're handling has significantly decreased. And so I felt like it was probably best to renegotiate that that contract to bring it more in line with the number of cases that they're handling. So I met with with the Bayoranos, and they were, of course, willing and felt like this was fair. And so we reduced the monthly payment amount, and what this contract is, is reducing the monthly payment amount and renewing their public defense agreement.
Thank you, Regan. Does anybody have any questions for Regan? Beth?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. Regan, so what would happen if the case count goes up? Is there a clause in there, or should it be on a, for lack of a better word, case-by-case basis, but amount per?
Yeah, so we used to have it capped at a monthly amount, but what we did is we capped it annually at fifty-one thousand. So the cases could could go, and you know, they've been averaging, they were in the two hundred range. They're about a hundred this in two thousand twenty-one is what it'll end up being. And so we've built in provisions that that equate for that, and then at a certain point, it's capped, the monthly or the annual payment would be. There's a smaller monthly payment we pay than the annual payment is capped. So the number of cases, if they exceed that, then they would be covering those without additional charge.
Great, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? All right, before us is to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with Cordy and Bayorano Incorporated P S for indigent defense services in substantial form as that attached here to.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Beth and seconded by Christina to authorize the city manager. Beth, would you like to speak to your motion?
I know, it sounds like they've been doing a great job so far. There's no reason to change the course for that, and appreciate the city's diligence in looking at the the rates and and the cadence of cases. So thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Christina, would you like to speak to your second?
Sure, I just want to say thank you for being good stewards of our expenses and catching that, and I wholeheartedly.
Thank you, Christina. Anybody else wish to speak for or against the motion? Seeing nobody, it's been moved and seconded to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with Cordy and Bayorano Incorporated P S for indigent defense services in substantial form as that attached here to. I will call for roll call vote. Jared, how do you vote?
Aye.
Sean, how do you vote?
Aye.
Christina, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jennifer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Joe, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Beth, how do you vote?
Aye.
I vote aye as unanimous to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with Cordy and Bayorano. Thank you all very much. That concludes our new business. Brings us into future agenda items. This, knowing that we're not having another meeting in December, we're looking at next year. Does council have any items they'd like to bring up to the future? Sean?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to put on a, or I guess our first meeting when we get back in the new year, discussion of school safety and in particular the recommendation in our budget to hire a school resource officer. I'd like to have the council discuss that and actually consider passing a resolution in support of that for K S D. So that's it.
Do we have consensus for bringing that back to a future agenda? I am on board with that.
I I got really loud in my house, so I only heard snippets of what Sean said, but if it was what I think it was about bringing a S R O to Kentwood, then I'm for it.
All right.
Can I can I ask a clarifying question, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So Sean, is this a resolution by the city council encouraging the Kent School District to have an S R O?
Yes.
Okay. Perfect.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to see on our future agenda? All right, seeing nobody else, let's move into council staff comments. First up, Megan.
Hello, I just want to say thank you really quick to everybody that showed up for Shop With The Cop. We got seventy-one kiddos or seventy-seven kiddos through all of that rain and got them some good Christmas gifts. And yeah, that's about it. Happy holidays, everybody.
Thank you, Megan. Ethan?
Hi, council. Yeah, just a quick report kind of on the holiday theme of for holidays this year, we did a drive-through event at C C P instead of kind of the traditional tree lighting. We didn't really know how popular or how that would go, if it would be popular or how it would go, and I think the count was estimated at around eight hundred people, so very popular. Very much got good feedback from the community and do want to thank our sponsors. B E C U was the main sponsor, but there were several other business sponsors as well. I think some council members may have helped, and we had some commission members there too. So just a really great event. That was it.
Thanks, Ethan. Don?
Thanks, Mayor and council. I just wanted to give a little update to council. If you recall, in the late summer, we talked about some deferred street maintenance contracts, and that was some paving, some panel replacement, and some grinding. The estimate for those three projects was, we had about two hundred and thirty thousand. Right now, the paving is completed. They're working on the panel replacement and the grinding, but those numbers are coming in at about a hundred and eighty-three thousand. So we were happy to have that be the case, and we'll evaluate. Obviously, there's already more things going on the list for that, but obviously, as we move forward into next year, we would be evaluating those things and obviously come back to council if there's additional that we would like to do in that regard. So that's all I had in that, and happy holidays, Merry Christmas to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Selena?
Good evening, council. Good evening, mayor. I don't have anything to report tonight. I just want to wish you all a happy holiday, and we will see you in Q one of January.
Thank you, Selena. Casey?
Good evening. I was just going to mention, we just got our REIT numbers in for November. And as of November, we will almost have enough money to cover our debt service payment for next year already. So we are way ahead of where we normally are. That is not using any of the funds that will be coming in next year, so it might be already set for two thousand twenty-three. So that was pretty exciting news to, I just wanted to share with you, and also happy holidays, and we'll see you in the new year. Thank you.
Thank you, Casey. Regan?
Good evening again, council. As you're aware, we were, we got a little bit fed up with driving around town and picking up shopping carts all throughout the medians and and on the sidewalks, and then spending a lot of time delivering them back to the respective businesses. So we decided in the interim, while we could prepare an ordinance to bring to council, to just start collecting the carts, and Justin, the owner of our building, agreed to let us store them in the back parking lot there. And we just let the businesses know we can't do this anymore. You'll need to come pick them up. And so finally, this this last week, they didn't start coming and picking up their carts, which has saved our maintenance crew a lot of time. And we hope that that continues. The the what we plan to present to council in the future is that they'll be charged a fee hopefully to enough to incentivize them to have some measures in place to actually pick up the cart, so we don't need to do that effort. Several other cities have done that as well, but we'll we'll bring that back back to council. Also, today, Mayor Wagner and I met with Representative Entiman. Jeff, do you want to talk about that?
No, go right ahead, Regan.
Okay, we had a great conversation with Representative Entiman. We brought up a couple of the really important issues. One, obviously, transportation. She's extremely supportive of our transportation projects. We discussed police reform and some of the issues that we're having in Covington and what other surrounding communities are experiencing from the reforms that came out of the last legislative session. And she, I was actually, we were pleasantly surprised to hear some of her support and some of the discussions that were going on, because it seemed like more than what we've we've heard in the past about what the legislature is going to do. They there's talked about possibly moving back to reasonable suspicion to be able to conduct a Terry stop as opposed to requiring probable cause. We don't know where that will end up, but that was some encouraging news. There's also a proposal that I believe we've shared out with the council a little bit about the governor and some others supporting the elimination of single-family zones in the state of Washington. She said that she opposes that legislation. And so those were some of the main things we discussed, and she was extremely supportive of the city of Covington, actually talked about wanting to move to Covington. So that was a great conversation we had. Mayor, Mayor Protem Smith?
Yeah, thanks. Regan had a couple of questions on on that. So did did Representative Entiman give any indication as to what is behind her position? Is she getting feedback from the public on on those two issues? Are there things, you know, and the follow-up is are the things we can do if we want to to support that? I'm I'm just curious, so.
So, yeah, we did. We did discuss that a little bit with with police reform. She said really her kind of philosophy around that is coming around, a lot of talks that they're having with police departments around the state and recognizing and understanding some of the issues that that we're going through. So that was good. And then the the issue of local local control over land use issues. For her, she felt like that legislation would hurt the people of color in that it would eliminate more homes for purchase and and create more apartments and multifamily dwellings and keep people renting as opposed to generating wealth through homeownership. I think I stated that right, mayor. I don't want to speak for Representative Entiman, but as I recall it, I believe that's what she was stating. Is that what you heard as well, Jeff?
Yeah, and that by eliminating single families, it's I believe Deborah, Representative Entiman, said that it would just actually drive up the price of housing, having fewer homes. I believe Deborah, Representative Entiman, said that it would just actually drive up the price of housing, having fewer homes.
Uh, great, thank you. And so that's all I have as far as an update and just uh. Hard to believe this is our last city council meeting of of this year. It's really been a wonderful year. I just want to thank. Obviously, staff is amazing and just the fantastic and incredible support. That we receive from the city council is just exceptional. So we thank you and thank you for the love of of the city, the love of Cov. And we appreciate it, so and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everyone.
Thanks, Regan. Uh, Mark?
Thank you, Mayor Wagner. There is an executive session tonight uh, to review the performance of a public employee pursuant to R C W forty two thirty. One ten sub one, sub little G. And when it comes around that, Mayor Wagner, I'll just ask that you. Give the estimated time that you believe you'll be ending at. And other than that, Happy New Year and Happy Holidays, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Krista?
I will be sending out the link to the executive session to city council in just a moment. So that you have that again. And I just wanted to thank everyone for another successful year. Doing most of our stuff virtually and kind of starting to get back to in person. Um, it's been quite a year, so thank you and happy holidays.
Thanks, Krista. Jared?
Yeah, I agree. Year year two of four and it's all pretty much been virtual, so hopefully we can uh, get to in person here soon. Um, I don't have anything else other than happy holidays, Happy New Year and stay safe.
Thanks, Jared. Sean?
Yeah, I don't have anything either. Um, yeah, again. Uh, happy holidays to everyone. It's been a pleasure working with all of you this last year and and like Jared said and others, I'm looking forward to um. Seeing each of you in person.
Thanks, Sean. Christina?
I knew I was coming up, but I caught me by surprise. Um, I just. I I had the wonderful opportunity of freezing um, during the holidays, h- holidays. Um, on Saturday, and I think Ethan said that there was eight hundred and fifty cars. It the 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 entire event was from one to four and it felt like it was eight hundred and fifty cars by two thirty, right? Then if if you were there, you know, it was just nonstop, but what a great turnout. Um, I heard lots of great feedback from both. Um, volunteers and people in the car, because I I don't think we would have gotten as many people to come through if they had to. Walk in the rain and actually get out of their cars, but in the nice warmth of the cars, we had just really a really good turnout and positive feedback. Um, besides that. I was icy on the road this morning, very icy. My car, I hit the brakes and it did not stop. Thankfully, um, we keep distance, so stay safe out there. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to everyone. Um, it's just such a pleasure working with you.
Thanks, Christina. Jennifer?
Um, I wanted to say that the tree looks fabulous. It just, it it's amazing. I love the color scheme. I love the coordination. That he staffed at an amazing job. It's a really catches your attention um, whenever you're near it, so great job on that. Um, also wanted to send my kudos to uh, youth athletics. Um. Everything opening back up. Our family's been participating in soccer and volleyball and soon basketball. And um, it's it's. Like nothing ever happened, except everybody's wearing masks. That's it. It's really great, so um, Curtis and his crew are doing a great job. And um, thank you to Chief Roberts for inviting us to uh, Shop With A Cop. Um, I am excited to see next year and hopefully even more kids participate. Um, while I was there, since i- it ended a little earlier than expected or um. At least, you know, for my shift, I did get an inflatable Grinch that's uh, in the back of my car. It's hilarious. So if uh, you assume you're driving around, please honk, because it's the funniest thing uh.
Are you uh, driving in the H O V lane with that now?
I seriously today is close, man. I was like, he's kind of real. He's not. I didn't. So he's just, he's in the backseat hanging out. So anyway, happy holidays. Thanks for making these meetings amazing. Um, yeah, it's just been a great year, uh, especially given the circumstances, so huge kudos to council and to staff. Thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer. Joe?
Uh, so first I want to say thanks for the great year to the staff. It was. It was a learning curve that we've gone uh, above and beyond on, so thank you for all of the. Changes that we've had to make, especially with meeting uh, in this wonderful Zoom atmosphere for the last two years now. I am very much looking forward to meeting in person. Um, I'm getting really tired of seeing you all through a screen. Uh, secondly, as I stated at our last meeting, uh, my parents just recently left the area. And uh, we were talking about being tired before the meeting. I haven't recovered from the state, being at their house until four A M. Sunday morning, waiting for people to come to take their animals and drive them across the country. So that I still haven't recovered from that, but uh, my dad wanted to pass along. Uh, a couple of things. One, thank to the city of Covington for being a welcoming environment. Being a place where everyone can come, enjoy and shop with. Uh, all the wonderful amenities that we have. Uh, he did also want to pass along that he is sad. He will no longer be able to call me and complain about traffic. And uh, to me, that is not a a sadness. That is a joy that I don't get that phone call anymore. But he did also want to say thank you to everyone here for making him feel welcome and make my stepmom also feeling welcome. Even though they were residents of Opera, so. Passing along that message and I again am looking forward to next year. I'm looking forward to this next. Few weeks where we all can have some calm and uh, over indulge on sweets. So I look forward to seeing you all in the new year. Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and I will, can't wait for January.
Thank you, Joe. Beth?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um. I think the biggest thing I wanted to put out there is to thank all of the staff. My fellow council members. It was my first full year being on council and. I just, I have so much appreciation, especially coming out of COVID. And we're still in it, but that first year, everybody was trying to get their view. Planted, figure out what the new norm might look like. And for twenty twenty one, I just felt like there were so many things that could have become obstacles that became challenges for us to rise above. And I am so grateful that we have the staff that we do, the leadership with Regan. And the rest of the council, the guidance. To think about operating differently, what can we do? I I'm really looking forward to seeing what twenty twenty two and beyond will hold for. The city of Covington and I just, I can't say enough. And give enough thanks to the staff and the team in the city. And the tree does look beautiful. I was driving by the other day and it just caught my eye and I just felt so so much joy inside because it was so festive, so. Thanks again for that. Wish everybody a happy holiday and safe new year.
Thank you, Beth. Um, just a few updates. Um, the tree lighting on November thirtieth was outstanding. Thank you to. Public Works Carla and Jaclyn, um, who were there. My wife and girls and I um, enjoyed lighting up the tree. And we even had a special guest, Shelley Dimmick came by to help start up the sound system that night, so. And the tree is amazing. Um, December first, we had another ribbon cutting for new business in Covington. Door of organics, um, where the old Pier One used to be inside. Also at S C A annual meeting that night where we voted on a balanced budget. Uh, I'm I'm sorry, I missed the holidays event on December fourth. My daughter turned nine, so she asked me to make sure that. This was not going to be the sixth day birthday that I worked, so but uh, it sounds amazing, so. I'm glad. Thank you to everybody who put that on. Uh, December eighth, we had the board. It was my last meeting with the Covington Chamber Board. I am off for a year. We voted as a chamber to join back with South Sound Chambers of Commerce Legislative Coalition. And the next morning on the ninth, we had our first meeting that I was able to join in one of the first goals that we are going to be doing. For South Sound Chambers, that's all the chambers in South King County, or most of them. Number one issue is transportation and pushing for a transportation package, Highway eighteen being a major. Um, also on the ninth was the Covington Chamber Ugly Sweater Contest. I still haven't found an ugly sweater that I have not liked, so I did not vote for any of them, but they all look cute. Uh, we met with Deborah Entiman today. Shop With A Cop was outstanding, thanks to the Rotary and all of the. Officers who showed up to help with that. Uh, tomorrow's S C A Board. I am running for treasurer again. I'll find out if I am going to be the treasurer for next year. And elections for S C A are to uh, Thursday night. With that, um. I just want to say uh, to staff, to everybody. Um, thank you for representing this city so well everywhere. Um, the leadership, um, from the leadership team with Regan and everybody else and the entire team. Do an outstanding job of making this a welcoming city. And a city that is talked about and touted, not just in South King County, but regionally about how well. Everybody enjoys visiting and working with on different committees. So I appreciate that and staff and Regan, you all make my job as mayor very easy, so I appreciate that. And to council, um, I could not do this without you. It uh, it's an honor to represent each of you and work with each of you to move this city forward. And I really appreciate the ability that even if we have a disagreement, we agree to disagree. Um, and yet we still maintain civility and. Our desires to work together for not our own agendas, but for the entire city. So I really appreciate that and it is such a. Pleasure and refreshing um, moment to join these meetings and work with you, so thank you for that. I really appreciate that and I wish. Each of you, cities, the city team, council members, all of your families. Very happy holidays and I hope that you um, are able to get some rest and relaxation over the next several weeks. Um, and I look forward to seeing you all after the first of the year, if not before, so thank you. Uh, with that, we'll go into our second public comment period. Speakers will state their name, address and organization. Comments are directed to the city council, not the audience or staff. And comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to no more than four minutes per speaker. With that, is there anybody in the audience who would like to address council? Please raise your hand. Anybody in the audience wish to address council tonight? I see Holly's on here. Holly, I want to thank you and Brianna for representing our city so well. I I really do not think we'd be as far along as we have without your teamwork, so thank you. Uh, seeing nobody raise their hand, um, we will move into and no other um. Business before us will move into an executive session to review the performance of a public employee pursuant to R C W forty two dot three zero. Dot one ten subsection one subsection little G. I hope I got that right, Mark. And I believe we'll be in executive session for probably no more than. Ninety minutes. Um, so it would be nine fifteen. At which time no further action will be taken. And with that, I wish all of you a very good night and a happy holidays and we will see you in the new year. And Krista, I will come back on once the executive session is finished. Thank you all.
Okay, so you can law, if everyone is out of the meeting right now, go ahead and log back into the meeting. It should still work. Um, I apologize about that. Um, I will restart it.
Okay.
I I know exactly why it happened now. Um, and I'll have to keep that in mind for the future.
Okay.
We'll restart it and. Um, try again.
Okay.
Time.
It actually worked very good. Um, the executive session, welcome back. We are back from our executive session. No further um. Action is to be taken tonight. Um, actually, no further action is to be taken this year, so. This meeting is adjourned at nine ten.